We got the Great, uh, you join me in to pledge the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. If you'd not sign in and wish to do so, that would be the opportune time. I'm not gonna force you to, you don't have to, if you'd like to. I want you to get the names spelled right. I see we're all present except for Pete. So at this point, we'll go for a general modification. Anybody have anything at this point? Okay, great. Uh, we're gonna, we'll slide down to the December first House of Meeting minutes. For now, your motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve.
It's been noted, seconded, under discussion. House members have?
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Public comments from the audience. Anybody have anything? Let me make sure you guys, you get three minutes. It's not a debate, non-question and answer. You get to come up and say your spiel. Please be respectful as much as possible and go from there, okay? So I will warn you, when you get to about 2:45, cut it off, okay? Has anybody got anything? I see somebody in the, in, in, in the back is, great. Come on up.
I was on the agenda, but it's a large event that could potentially do the public comment. Yeah, I'm sorry. And so I had came, I think it was a couple of the meetings ago, and you would ask for like some more information like that you could actually look at. And I only printed one of each. I hope that's okay, so I didn't wanna, cause I'm still, so what, what I'm gonna present to you, there's a flyer that I'll be putting out. And the only thing that it's missing, and the date is where I'm actually aiming for, but the thing that's missing will be a QR code and then the URL that people can go to to pre-register, so I know who's all coming to have the, to have all the stuff that I'll need, the materials. And then this is just kind of like an agenda of what would be going on in the class, the front and back. So if you just wanna pass that around, then if anyone has any questions or any further information, I guess, that you guys might need. We're getting, and if anyone needs a refresher, I'm basically seeing if I could get the, if I could get the nonprofit rate for the community to rent for an herbal medicine class.
Okay.
So since it's not on the agenda, how do we?
Well, she is on the agenda. She, she's coming, she hasn't come back yet.
Yeah, I called, I called earlier because I have a lot of stuff going on at home tonight, and so I had to ask, I was like, I'm not gonna be able to save the whole thing. And I was checking to see where I was at on the agenda, and it was just brought to my attention that I could bring it up initially right now, since I have to get back to my house as soon as possible. So I just was wondering, or is she, like, in the boat tonight because what that means?
Do you feel comfortable with us carrying on to debate the situation?
Yeah, absolutely. It's not till the class that I'm gonna do isn't till the very first, so of January, sorry, January, so it's.
We could pump this, we could research this and look at it and
Yeah, absolutely.
come back at first of January with an answer.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And you guys can, you guys can just keep that copy too, because like I said, it's not a complete copy, so.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Cool, thank you. Uh, any other public comments at this point? Okay, move on to, uh, community group updates. Nice to see you, Jennifer.
Hi, guys. So I don't know how long it's been, but Healthy Tico, we're doing great this year. We have, um, ten high schoolers on the Coalition this year, so it's the largest number we've had. And they're actually pretty go-ko about some stuff. Um, they helped us with a lot of stuff. We had Red Ribbon Week in October, celebrating a drug-free life. And so there was activities, um, and educational pieces that went along with that, that were done in the school. Um, and so they were part of that. And so our next project we're working on is also in the school. They really wanted to work on, um, Words Matter and Hope. Um, except here, they all kind of had the same feeling of, okay, January's kind of down, right? Cause you just had Christmas, you've had two weeks off, and now we're back. So, um, that's the high schoolers' focus is, um, words matter, resilience. Um, and then pointing to resources, that was the other piece of what they were talking about, is making sure that, um, so we're unbeknownst to them. Um, maybe now, but keep forgetting about the eyes and ears in the room. Um, but our SAP, our Student Assistance Professional, and our counselor will be highlighted for the week. Uh, so that everybody in the school makes sure, cause we do have some new students, um, even though it is fall, but everybody gets busy. Uh, so anyway, just doing some check-ins with their peers and making sure they're checking in with trusted adults in the school and, and having some activities around that. Um, so those are the main things coming up, but then the next thing will be, um, the, um, National Forum. So I, we're gonna, for the first time ever, the Coalition is able to bring, uh, four students over to DC area for the, um, Community Anti-Drug Coalitions Association. And they'll get to meet with legislators. That organization will pair up, um, other coalitions in our region like Pomeroy, um, us, Spokane, and we'll get meetings with our legislators and, uh, or their staffers. And talk about, because, uh, most of us have federal funding for the coalitions. And so talking about the impacts of how that has helped our communities. And so we're excited. This will be the first time we'll have student presentate centers. Cause most of the times, that's who talks to them. It's not us adults, us boring adults. It's the youth, that's who they're trying to impact. So that's really exciting for us getting all of them. So we're just getting all that worked out, so hopefully next time I see you, we'll have a little info from that. So, anyway, that's what's going on with Healthy Tico right now. Um, if you guys have any questions or anything, just let me know. Okay. Are you gonna talk about the chamber? I didn't sign in for the chamber, but, um, okay.
You just switched sides.
Okay, this is the chamber side. So Tico Chamber, we had our huge, one of our, our second biggest event, which is, well, maybe our biggest event, which is Small Business Saturday, which was the last Saturday of November. It was pretty well attended. We tried something new this year with a direct mailing, and so you guys probably got that little postcard in the mail about it. Um, so the feedback I've gotten from those representatives that were at the December meeting said they had good traffic. Um, except for the hardware store, apparently. Um, most people were out shopping for other things. Um, so go see the hardware store, please. Let's see, we had the Grinch. I don't know if you guys were there. But we had a youth doing the Grinch, and it was the perfect thing for this, uh, student because they don't like to talk a lot, like they like to talk to their friends, obviously, but, um, so being in the mask really emboldened the student to, uh, be in character and have a lot of fun, and the kids just ate it up, so it was really great. Um, we had tree caroling this time, the, uh, tree lighting with caroling before the movie. And that worked really well, and we had several families and, and people there. Unfortunately, I missed all the fun this year, so, but I'll be there next year. Um, so yeah, that's our big thing. And our next thing coming up is, um, next, no, this week, Thursday night. Everybody's invited, obviously, cause cities, uh, chamber, are chamber members. Um, we're having our quarterly meeting, which is a social this year. Uh, so we are bringing appetizers, and Sean's in charge of the music, and we'll be at the community center just socially and catching up with our year and how our businesses are doing and how we, you know, Tico's doing and each other, obviously checking in with each other. Um, and then our January meeting is our, uh, annual meeting that we do voting for the new board. So I had agreed to do this for one year, and so we've got somebody else taking over, hopefully next year. Um, that's the plan anyway, cause nobody else is on the slate, so. Um, anyway, so that's what's going on with the chamber. Any questions about the chamber?
I'd just like to comment. I just, Jim, I think you did a phenomenal job in, in the, as a president of it this year, and, uh, and, and just continuing to build on great things. And it was really exciting to see all the things you did and some of the out-of-the-box things. It was really wonderful to, it is wonderful to go up and down Crosby and see all those painted windows. And I know that kind of came from one of the businesses out there, came from the chamber itself.
It just kinda came down the street, and everybody's like, okay, we wanna do that. Well, we wanna do that. And then when we came time to plan for small business, I'm like, well, can we keep paint the community center? And Eliza's like, well, it comes off, so yeah, you pay for it. I'm like, okay. So yeah, we got that all done, and then the businesses decorated the windows so lovely, and, um, so downtown looks really nice this year, and I heard a few comments about that, so. And the businesses are really proud about that too, cause, you know, happy, you know, that makes everybody happy.
But even things that happened with Slippery Gulch, and it was different this year with the food and, and everything for the breakfast.
Oh, yeah, this year was a
a phenomenal job of putting everything together, so I just really wanna thank you, and so, so you are stepping out, you won't be doing it next year?
I'm gonna be, uh, so, um, the person that's coming up, I'm not gonna say anything until the vote's final, but, um, you can come to the January meeting, 7:30. Tressle, first, uh, second Friday in January. Nobody wanted to come on second. I don't know why. Um, so, uh, yeah, so the breakfast was a little bit of a learning curve, cause that had been done for years, but we hadn't done it as a committee before. So that was fun, and we had a lot of community support to get that done. Several people here on the council helped. Um, we got, so that was a big thing. Um, Melinda and Daryl, they were the force behind this new sign on the, uh, store. Which we've gotten tons of positive feedback about that, just trying to, you know, tie in our theme of wheat around town. Um, and then the other big thing we got done this year, which is, you guys don't see it as much, but I spent a lot of the time on, um, revamped our website. And so this year, we also have, um, not only as our member applications, but we have chamber apparel, and they're on our website. You can actually purchase online if you'd like. Um, or you can just mail in a check and whatever, it's same old, same old, that way. But we now are, you know, moving slowly into the 2000s, and so, yeah.
But well done. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been an exciting year, so.
What time did you say your social was Thursday?
Six.
Six, thank you.
Thursday at six at the community center and Dress Festive.
Thanks. Okay, uh, unfinished business. Union contract. Who else on the committee would like to bring us up to debate on what's going on?
Well, we called this a while ago, and there's not much going on yet, and not, we haven't gotten anything back from either side yet, so.
Well, it's in negotiations.
Yeah, it's in negotiations.
There have been some active negotiations. I think we're a little over halfway there. And, um, should hopefully have things tied up, um, hopefully very early here in the beginning of the year. Part of it is, um, some of it on the other team that, uh, being able to meet up, they haven't been available sometimes, and then sometimes it hasn't been available.
All right, um, ordinance 907, final budget, what do we got?
So these are the budget numbers that have been presented the last of the final budget hearing and final budget hearing with the changes requested. So I believe since the last presentation of the budget, uh, the change is basically putting a thousand dollars each for water, sewer, and streets for shop repairs, like for the works, building repairs. And then I cleaned up the, um, street levy fund because I'm not a hundred percent sure that everyone realizes that the street levy did not pass this year. So I corrected those figures, um, and made sure that the water reserve figures are corrected. Uh, no money directed towards capital projects. You just have to do that if something comes up in your, what reserves to, so those were the changes.
Because it didn't pass with 60%?
Correct. It was 28.7%.
Oh, we're gonna try to, in the springtime, put it in again, or?
I don't know. We'll think about it. What's the timeline? How quick do I have, how quick do we have to make a decision? It's gotta be coming up, or it doesn't?
Right. We don't normally participate in the, I've heard once, I don't, I don't know the deadlines, et cetera, up to top of the month.
I don't think we've ever done this before.
So that changed the budget of money for that street then?
Yes, so there's still fifty Yes, with the six, well, with the things the city would normally fund. Um, it doesn't change outside monies coming in for preservation type of projects, but, um, so there's, there'll be $50,000 available from this year to next year to put towards projects, but unless, uh, levy will be rerun and pass, then there won't be the extra 50 to go with that towards those projects.
So what we're talking about right now, that's not gonna cover ordinance 908, is that, that included in that too, what we're talking about now?
Yes, it's in here. If, if, you'll see that the under, um, the listed funds, street levy fund, there's nothing in it for revenues.
Okay, so the transfers of water and sewer, you got them going into the current expense. I thought we agreed that they're gonna go into the water and sewer fund.
No, we agreed that they were going to go into the general funding, that in January you would place it where it's been getting balances for.
So we still got, our in January, we're still gonna put it in.
I always had a couple of questions on the, on this one with all the funds. So the, under the water, um, and sewer reserves, especially the sewer reserve, so it's showing at, um, half a million there. I thought that wasn't been, that figure wasn't gonna be in play till the end of, uh, 2026, when we put another 150,000 in there.
Correct, but that's part of the revenues, so that's the total, the total amount that you start the year with, plus what you add to it is all revenue. So that's what you're looking at here, and we don't have any scheduled expenditures. So that's why, that's also the thing that we've been all this.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the process of that. So tonight on that other thing we're doing later, there's, we're moving, last year we voted, we moved 150,000 to sewer water. Tonight we're moving it into the actual sewer reserve.
Correct.
And then we will again do that at the end of next year, and that's where we're giving this.
That's right.
Okay, that's right. And then, um, so, and then the water reserve is, that's what we've been discussing, that, that hasn't really changed. But if we put, if we do what Dave says, and we put money from the, the taxes in there in January, that could maybe be designated for water reserves, so we could go that up.
Right, uh, so those things would just be a budget amendment?
Okay.
In January, when you had a chance to look at what the beginning balances are and decide if that's what you really want to do.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 907, the final budget.
Okay, been moved. Is there a second?
Can I go to it tonight, and yeah?
I'll second, I just have one more question.
Okay, you're second, okay. Uh, any more discussion?
So I just, I, I, looking under the salaries, cause they weren't, haven't been broken down in this way, what we looked at before. So I just wanna, I, I, I felt like a question I asked this summer didn't fully get, um, answered. So for our public work supervisor, so with the certifications that have been accomplished. So how, how much of an increase was that? Because you remember, we asked for that document that was signed, and then there was a little bit of debate on the bottom, there was some admission. So I'm not sure if he got, if he's had a $2 an hour raise, or with, now that he finished the other part of his water, right? Is it, is it now $4? Is that what that is reflected here?
Yeah.
So, so then when, so this was water, right?
Uh, wastewater.
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 So what's the other certification?
Water, water.
And are there two steps to it?
No, just one.
So there's another, so it's a total of, it'll be a total of $6 an hour. Okay, because we, we debated that back and forth, and I remember, I believe Mike, it was you, or we said, well, we'll, we'll hammer that out because of the union contract. But, um, I guess I was never really comfortable with the fact that it, there was writing on the bottom in that initial. I thought that what we were talking about was $2 for one completed certification and $2 for the other. And so for a total of four.
Correct, and then when he goes to work on the water, there'll be another $2 bump.
No, see, that's what I, see, I was thinking along, it was $2 for total water, $2 for total sewer.
Oh.
See, that, that, and that's what it had been in the past, and, and, and I was confused about that, that document, so we pushed it off. So, so I, um, I, I guess it still could be reflected in the, in the future. But I, I just feel like that was not really straight up with the council about what those increases were gonna be.
I totally agree with that, because I don't think that we were in on that.
It's the same increases that we've always had.
I'm pretty sure when I came on the council, it was a dollar for each.
No, it's, it's not specified then, it has been $2 certification.
But for total certification.
Sure, sort of.
I went back and looked at that one time, I'm sure, so.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll debate that, but it's always been two.
So, so it's been a total of $6 an hour every single time?
Yep.
Okay, I, okay, I, well, I guess I'd like to look that up, and maybe I can do that further later.
Well, I, I
But I mean, well, obviously, if we agree to this budget, we're not gonna go back on some of these salaries.
Right.
Yeah, and, okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion, it's been seconded. Any more discussion? Ours in favor of the motion to pass the budget, say aye.
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 Opposed, same side?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna go around. In favor?
Yes.
That's in favor. A reason?
Because I, I, I feel like I brought it up this summer, and I feel like we did not really hammer that out. And, um, I, I just, I, I don't feel like that is true to the document that was sent before. Everything else is fine, what about you?
Two in favor?
No.
Opposed? One down. Two opposed? Yeah, I oppose them. Dan? You're opposed.
So I don't put something else?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have to pass a budget by the end of this year. We cannot pass it at a special meeting. So you guys need to figure out what you want to do tonight. This is our chance to pass the budget. We have six weeks.
This is supposed to be negotiated with the union.
No, we have, we don't have a contract, so we have to
I think that's its cause and that, you know, the uncertainty.
The salaries are, are, this, except for Stevens, they're exactly the same as what they were last year.
So can I just clarify? I, I don't have a problem with any other part of the budget, um, I'm, I'm fine. It's just, I, I just feel like that was never clarified, and, and I really do feel that I, that it was a, a total of $2, and now it's not $6.
Yeah, well, I can't help that, okay? All I can do is go back to the history of what I've, what I've known since I was on the council. We've always gotten a $2 bump. On, on air certification. Now, we don't do that, I don't think they've ever done that for mosquito. Okay, because that's another license. Hey, I don't think we've ever done that for pesticide license. We've probably never done that to get a CDL. Okay, but when we don't, you guys gotta understand, those guys, every, every day Steven comes to work, he's worth more money. Okay, he's worth more money to us, and he's worth more money to those guys out there that have got other sewer treatment plans.
It, it's, it's not a question of employees.
Well, it sounds like it is.
It's a question of clarification, clear clarification. And I think if we didn't have all this uncertainty with the union right now, we would all feel really okay, you know, right now.
If you guys had looked at the union contract, the one that, okay, the one that left my desk addressed this. And it addressed it to a lesser degree than what we had.
But it's being negotiated now.
It's being negotiated, but I, I don't know where it's at anymore.
Yeah, nor, nor do I.
Am I missing something? Because I don't see any increase in this information here for certificates. This is the salary that he had before plus 0% code. This does not address the certification dollars. So what's the issue with the budget?
Well, that's what I just asked, if it included the handholding of the raise of the $4, that's, I don't know, but Eliza said it does, so that's what I'm
But if you go back to 908, then it's a 2.5 increase now, which is okay. But it doesn't, you're right, it doesn't have the increase in the certificate.
The other thing, depending on how the contract comes out, that could change all those things.
We didn't, you know, I don't agree with it.
I mean, that's kind of ridiculous to hold up the whole budget for the city for the year.
The budget can go, it's just that part can be eliminated.
But I don't see that addressed in here, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, but if we pass it, we say, okay, then you're gonna give it to them.
He's already making a salary.
I know, though, that's what I'm, that's what I was just asking. I wasn't really trying to start a review for the budget. And so, um, I don't know how to go forward now that we voted against it, if, how can we go forward?
Should've thought of that earlier. Just re-vote for it, okay? With the council's approval, I'll accept another motion to approve the budget.
I, I, I think this can probably be addressed in the union contract, so it
Okay, is there a motion out there?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Mike's moved that we accept the 26 budget. Is there a second? And seconded. Any more discussion? We're gonna do this, go around the table. Ours, Mike, how do you vote?
In favor.
Three?
In favor.
Two? Pardon?
I'll vote in favor.
In favor, okay, three? Dan?
Yeah.
Four in favor? I'm not gonna vote for it. So that's a no, correct, pardon. Okay, four, four to one, march?
Yes.
You vote in favor, so it's five to one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion passes and we accept the budget. Thank you. All right. Noise ordinance. Do we know anything to, to start there?
Um, other than, I think the last discussion I recall on that was whether you want to keep the noise ordinance you have in place, or whether you want to do more of the objective noise ordinance by using the decimal meter to, and regol, and those are kind of the options you have. One, uh, concern I think I had the last one was maybe the expense of those decimal meters. I don't think, when I looked at it, it didn't look like it was, it was too much of one. So it's really kind of up to the council, in what direction you guys wanna go on, how you wanna, uh, regulate noise. Whether you want to just keep it the way it is, or, or go with the, um, decimal meter.
Um, I'm not aware. Have we had any more complaints?
No, we don't.
We don't know.
Currently deal with the, right.
Okay, they would go directly to the code enforcement, so we don't really track that very much.
But I also think that maybe that is an issue that's been going to the, the council.
Sheriffs, yeah. Um, right here. Um, yeah, I know.
I have a question for Eric. You mentioned that you had done this with another community. Did you happen to go back and work?
So the one we did with the other, with, with the other community wasn't, uh, the, the choice was between the decimal level, um, enforcement or, or I call this subjective one, kind of like what Tico has now, and they went with this subjective one.
My question with the decimal meter, uh, it's like any other kind of things that you use, uh, like, uh, speed, um, radar guns, uh, to whatever, they have to be calibrated and F cap and everything, and then when you start going in there and say, okay, well, we're gonna measure it. Well, then you gotta say what distance you're gonna measure it from, you know, uh, uh, you know, height. I used to do, have to do light metering, uh, at banks, and it was, you know, specific this footage, this height, and everything to get it, so everything was the same. You'd have to have that into it, as far as when you got there with this meter, that it's been verified, you got certification that it's, you know, reading correctly. And at what distance, at what height, and everything else, that you're, you know, this is what the, the reading has to be. and everything else that you're, you know, this is what the the reading has to be. So I think it's gonna ask for a lot of problems when you start doing it that way.
Cause that would be, I think that would be part of the evidence, right, if you're enforcing it, then you wanna get that kind of stuff in place.
Right, you can just start there, say, okay, yeah, it's high, but you haven't had it calibrated, you don't, you know, it's not the same measurement every time. You know, you've got bushes, trees, whatever that's blocking it.
Open windows.
Open windows, yeah. Yeah, and two-story.
Maintenance record on that thing, technician, you have to go back and recertify.
It seems like a if you guys don't mind, Mr. Adam? Have we uh has the situation changed at all?
Yes, it's just, the situation's just changed to now it's different noise.
It's different what?
Now it's just different noise. Now there, now he has installed motion sensor alarms so that when people go in and out their houses, now there's an alarm going off every time people go in and out their homes.
Okay.
So it's just changing.
And you're still in conversation with uh either deputies or?
Uh, I'm directly in contact with the prosecutor's office.
Okay, you're looking for legal, for a legal.
Oh, no, they they contacted me about stuff, they I did not reach out to them.
Okay, 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 all right.
Eric or Mike, when you go up for disturbing the peace, what defines that disturbing the peace?
Well, I I think that the ordinance, like it says, will say what like noise that what, you know, that um disturbs someone's. You know, that's kind of what they say, it would be that somebody can't enjoy the comfort of their home, right? So really what you have to do is you have to let the code enforcer go ahead and like actually observe the noise right down when he says, maybe they did recording of it, and then you just you make the argument that this is, yeah, this is beyond reasonable and then and we, and you bring the evidence to the court.
It's subjective.
You know, that's subjective, but I'm saying, I mean, but you you arrest people or whatever for disturbing the peace, there's gotta be something that defines that that peace that they're disturbing.
Then it becomes eyewitness, so if you.
Right, but I'm saying if that's the case, then I mean, that's easier than going in with, you know, trying to measure the decimals of it. If it's disturbing the peace and you get the police involved and they come out and they verify it and and do that legal route.
Yeah, and in this case, it's really the the code, the 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 city code enforcers has enforced the city, like the sheriff's deputy's not gonna enforce the city ordinance, it's gotta be the code enforcer.
Right.
Doing it, and the decimal, the decimal reading, what it does is, if you get a reading, if it if it if the code just says, hey, the noise at you know, this certain level, and you have a decimal reading, then it's, you're not having to worry about, you know, making subjective arguments back and forth and having a judge decide. You got, okay, here's here's what the code says, it can't be this reading, here's what decimal reading is, and here's our evidence showing that it was certified and how I took it, where it was and what time of day and all those things, probably like an affidavit from the code enforcer, and that's, that would be your evidence.
How does that affect fireworks?
Well, that's that's, that's the thing, that's the thing, it's like if someone has a problem with fireworks going off, technically speaking, and if it's if it reaches a decimal by holding that, I guess what you do is you can accept fireworks either on the Fourth of July.
That's already permitted under the city, that's already permitted under the Tico, there's already exceptions for that under.
Under the current numbers ordinance, yeah. Yeah, there's certain things you can just accept out. So it's up to the council if you want, I really, I mean, again, if 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 you want, yeah, it's really good.
Can I ask Adam a question? So Adam, can you help understand, so with what you're doing now, if we, if this code was in place in the city, would it really drastically change your ability to um make a difference in this whole situation, or is it just one small layer to it or?
It, from my situation, no, but I know there are other neighbors and there are other people in the community that it will make a difference for.
And I guess I'm not sure why that would be the case.
It gives something subjective, it it takes it from subjective to something measurable, so instead of it being a he said, she said, subjective argument, it becomes a it becomes something measurable to where we can say, yes, this is something specific that happened, it was measured, it is documented, and it is recorded somewhere.
If like Reed said, if they're just taking a video of of it and turning that into code enforcement or the sheriff, whichever applies, would that not be sufficient?
You have to do it multiple times, and then again, it turns into what what is too loud for you versus me, and then having a decimal reader that does show how loud it was at distance just strengthens the argument, it's all about it's all about how the council would define what you think is appropriate for our community at the end of the day.
Thanks.
Have you guys sought an anti-harassment order from the court?
Yes, we already have one, it's been violated multiple times, which is why the prosecutor's office does reach out to us.
Well, the actions of them, they're gonna do something.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, what do we wanna do, we wanna see what the results of that harassment?
Well, I think we need to have some more information on the cost and obligations of certification and.
I think the thing we run into when we start jumping in there is the enforcement, how are we gonna do this?
That and the cost of the meter and all that, I mean, it all goes together.
Right. And and I mean.
And availability, because when the noise is at certain level, you may not be around, so how are we gonna do that, other than having the city crew?
We're gonna have to give it to you soon.
And the other thing too is we gotta realize that this is not just a block issue that we're talking about, it's the city why that we we need to discuss it more. Yes, this is what this, you know, the block is what's causing this problem, but the issue that we're talking about, we need to enforce it, you know, for the whole city.
And that's what I think we need to do, because there've been times of my worries that we've had problems with like had problems with individuals being loud at night. Of the city why.
I'll talk to Kim about that. Okay, well, let's see, I don't know, just.
I don't know if we're ready yet, um like we said, it it's not that we.
I think we need to walk real carefully here, okay?
So I I I think that as it continues to happen, we need to know about it and so that if it's not just like an isolated, especially if there's other situations in town. Um, but I just don't know if we're ready, plus I think we really need to have the verbiage in front of us of what the ordinance actually is to say, I think it was, it was in the packet you first gave us, did you have an actual word about ordinance, so.
And did you look at that, Eric, as far as the wording on it that he gave to be able to include that into our create or are we creating one or are we just modifying what we have?
Well, I think it's adopting a state.
It's just mod, it's just modifying and adopting a current state R C W.
Okay.
Well, it'd be language from, it'd be language from the state R C W, but you'd be essentially amending your color change, you'd be changing the noise limits from from what it is now to 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 a lot of language with the city R C W that's for environmental.
So I I think what she's saying, and I agree, is that we need to see something, you know, we can't just vote on it and say, yeah, we're gonna do it, we don't.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
What we're gonna do.
Do you want me to put together an ordinance and have you look at it and then decide it that way?
I think so.
I think that would be helpful and maybe kick it down to middle January meeting or something and be presented with any other issues that are going on.
I'd like to see some more information from other people in the town, do what their thoughts are. Rather than dealing with just this one, what's the rest of the community that, are they in favor, most of us I think would be, but it should be nice to know that they support what we're doing.
Well, I know we've had issue with fireworks all the time, and here lately, there's been these big booms going off, which nobody seems to know what those were. Um, no flying planes or something. Um, so yeah, I was actually gonna say, we need to address for the city why, not just one incident, we can't just pick out something like that. Take care.
Okay, we will try to get something back, and in the meantime, if you guys wanna scrub around on the internet and finds and stuff that maybe fits the bill, go ahead. Okay, uh wastewater treatment plant facilities by Century West.
So we brought you some light reading material.
Yeah, thanks.
I also brought a cheat sheet because, so we can we can discuss a little bit, so through the whole thing. What you're interested in is the alternatives.
I think you have to think too.
That's really nice, guys, this is really pretty.
Yeah, so most of it is uh the whole front end of that is the justification and the reasons and the the flow rates and all all that kind of stuff, but when you get to the, get to the end, uh that's where we have the alternatives that we actually boil down to look at, so just to to kind of run through, and the idea here is we want you to to take your time to review this, have questions. We've left it as preliminary because we wanna get cities' feedback on your feelings on the various alternatives. Uh, we've, there's, at the very end of the report, there's a rating matrix, uh that kind of weights different uh different things, uh different attributes of the of the alternatives. But we left the city's feelings about it blank because we wanna get that feedback from you guys, so we want your preference to be reflected in the report. But uh if you want, we'll just run through these these uh alternatives, these are just like the very basic bulletproof points. Uh, alternative one is refurbishment of the existing facilities, so um as we've discussed previously, the the current facility doesn't meet the class two reliability requirements for EPA, so you need a a second digester and a second drying bed to meet those requirements. And then uh the current facility also has a lot of equipment that's in a state of disrepair that needs to be refurbished uh for continued use, so we've uh put in there a cost for reconstruction, primary clarifier, aeration basin, and a aerobic digester. Uh, this uh this just brings up the plant to current standards that does not address the summer discharge limitations. So uh this on its own is not a complete alternative, so to speak, has to be combined with the with alternatives two and three, which address the summer. So the cost estimate we have for this one is eight point nine million, on all these cost estimates, which are large scary numbers, uh we shoot high because this stage, there's so many unknowns, uh that we want to guess high, and then we add thirty percent. So we have a thirty percent contingency on all these, so as we progress and narrow down the design, we can tighten up some of the unknowns and hopefully find some efficiencies to reduce the overall costs. This is, the numbers we have here are more um relative, so you can tell when one is more expensive than another, the final number will will adjust over time. Uh, moving down to alternative two, so as mentioned, uh we need all the improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, that's as described in alternative one. But in order to address the summer discharge uh situation there, particularly the temperature issue of uh discharging during the summer, uh this would construct a four acre lagoon that would store all your summertime flows, and then those flows would be discharged back to the creek over the winter months when the temperature isn't an issue. So the sixteen million dollar cost estimate on that one is the all improvements of alternative one plus the four acre storage lagoon. Moving down to alternative three, similarly, after do all the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, as in alternative one. But this one, rather than store all summer flows, we have a small lagoon to provide temporary storage, and then the effluent is discharged to the ten acre crop during the summer, so you don't have to store the entire volume. It's, you have a small amount that's being stored and then discharged on an irrigated crop and a ten acre field. We didn't specify a crop that uh alfalfa is commonly used for for the, has good hydraulic uptake and uh is generally easy and there's no no risk of entering the the human, human food chain, so so that's commonly used, uh that ends up being the the least expensive at fourteen million, fourteen and a half million approximately. So all of the first three are just improvements to the existing plant plus something else. Alternative four is the membrane bioreactor, which uh we discussed a little bit, it's a uh self-contained box treatment, so to speak, it's a high level of treatment. Um, it can be brought in, usually it's it's constructed on a on a truck bed, it's about the size of a of a shipping container, and they just set it in place and and hook it up. And the uh the cost of the the treatment plant itself is city actually got quote, uh Steven contacted one of the suppliers and and uh and provided us with that quote so we could compare, and actually compared it quite closely to what EPA standards would suggest uh at a little over four million for the for the the product itself. What uh was interesting though is it will not replace all of the processes at the treatment plant. So the the membrane bioreactor, it does a primary treatment for effluent, but it does generate biosolids, so you still have to have an aerobic digester and either drying beds or a filter press to deal with those, so you can't get away bringing in a membrane bioreactor doesn't solve all the all the issues with aging equipment at the treatment plant, so you still need some of that equipment. Also, N B R doesn't do anything to adjust the temperature, so we're still left with the summer storage issue or the summer discharge, so um in order to make this a complete alternative, we added in the uh the the four acre storage lagoon that can be swapped out for the irrigation also, but just so we could have, present that price as as a complete alternative comes in at twenty four million, which is the most expensive alternative. And again, there may be some some options for for finding some efficiencies, but that's relatively, it's going to be the most expensive because we're bringing in a large, very expensive piece of equipment and also have to do some of the upgrades to the treatment plant to to keep it all working. Uh, on the, on that side is alternative five, which is abandoning the treatment plant altogether and going to completely aerated lagoons and and land application. Uh, this is a strategy or the treatment that's used by a lot of the smaller communities. The the big issue with it is it requires a lot of land, so you have to store since you're not discharging to the creek at all, you have to irrigate all of it, and you can't irrigate during the winter, so instead of storing it during the summer, you have to store it all winter long, so the lagoon has to be large enough to basically take an entire year's worth of your flows, store it, and then irrigate during the growing season. So uh for the flow rates we we have, we're assuming or calculating out a twelve acre lagoon would store, would provide the handle of storage, and then you'd need a forty five acre crop to irrigate that during the summer growing season. So basically, you need a sixty acre parcel, more or less, to to make that one work. And nineteen million, that is uh largely for land acquisition and also the mass grading for for a twelve acre lagoon has to be lined and then irrigation of the facilities and so on. So those are the five treatment alternatives, and then uh we also looked at specifically the uh solids de-watering because flood drying bed is was recommended. The operators expressed a distaste for for that, and I don't blame them. But we did include that as a as an estimate, so uh it's twenty one hundred feet of drying bed with all the other stuff that goes along with it, uh was two hundred nine thousand. The belt press, uh the equipment itself is only about a hundred and fifty thousand, but has to be housed inside the building, has to have a concrete pad, has to have plumbing, electrical, so on, so all that stuff adds up quite a bit uh to a total of eight hundred twenty thousand, so it's about a five hundred thousand dollar premium for the belt press over the drying beds. That's the.
And for alter, for alternative number five?
Yes.
That price you have there, that is a land price?
That includes land, we assume uh five thousand dollars an acre. Which is, so uh in Quimby County, we just looked at the uh county uh the tax rolls, they they go about twenty seven, three thousand dollars an acre as their market value, and we assume there'd be a little bit of a premium on that, so. We assume there'd be a little bit of a premium on that, so.
And where would that come up with sixty acres?
Well, that's, that's the question. Yeah, it's gotta be somewhere close enough that it can be easily pumped to.
Because if it's a further way, then you gotta, you're just, a creek crossing costs and nothing else.
Yeah. Which, I mean, those are all, can all be overcome. But yeah, the further away you get, I mean, more pipe, more pumping costs and you might have to, you know, have an intermediate pump station along the way.
So look at number six, you'd have to have some kind of study to see if you've got sixty to seventy acres somewhere close by.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we didn't, we didn't go looking. We didn't, by being property owner, we didn't do anything like that. We just discern, determine what, what this is, the space that would be needed.
Okay, for, uh, alternative number four, can you take one of the basins that are there and like, uh, the, the good one, middle one, and change that into a digester? Or you gotta put a whole new one in?
Well, the, the only, the other thing with the membrane bioreactor is it does not, uh, react well to rapid fluctuations in flow. So they recommended equalization basin in front of it.
Oh, okay.
So, but yes, along those lines, we did assume that, uh, the, the good base, the.
So you use two clarifiers there to equalize?
Yes, we can use the clarifiers. Yes, yeah. So the clarifiers could be used as the, the equalization basin, so we didn't, uh, didn't add any cost to that.
And, and for, uh, the acres, um, there's probably enough right down there for a lagoon between the plant and the substation?
Yeah, I think so. I think it would.
Can you build it up deep enough?
Yeah, it's, you know, there's a little bit of a slope there, but it looks, I mean, without, you know, surveying or anything, it looks like it would, would work there.
Well, I was getting at with four, that with that right there, if the town did all of a sudden have a big boom in people, that you could add a second one?
That's true, yes.
And, uh, and, and, because there'll be enough land out there to add a second one?
Yeah, they're, because they're, they're, uh, segmented or whatever, yeah.
Whatever the size is gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, you can add a second, second train.
So, couple of questions. So on alternative one, so when you say it has to be combined, so is that adding another eight million on top of those two?
No, those are, those include, so two, alternatives two and three include the eight point nine million of alternative one.
Okay. And then, I, I'm sorry, this might be a very silly question because I was in a, a meeting recently and some, another, um, a mayor was talking about a situation in his town and he mentioned the term, I think it's PFAS? It, it's about.
PFAS?
Is that what it, okay. And so, so that, that's chemical treatment, is that what that is? Or Phoenix, is that, before you go way down that road, is that involved in, in any way what we're doing?
Uh, I don't believe there's any issues with PFAS in Tico, not to my knowledge. It's, so that's the residual from firefighting foam used at airports. So, uh, airway heist has a big issue because it put a big well right near the airport base, right where they had done all the firefighter training for years and their well came up with PFAS. And that is a, it's what they call a durable molecule, so it doesn't break down. And so it, it ends up in the water supply and it also ends up in wastewater supply. And so, it, that would be a contaminant of concern that they would not want going into hangman creek. But my knowledge, Tico doesn't.
Well, and, and this is not, a community not very far away and, and I guess their concern, and for some reason they are maybe dealing with that there. And, um, the, the two things came up from it is, one is, uh, that the more they had to deal with it, the more the state might look at them as a chemical treatment plant rather than just a wastewater treatment plant is. So my first question to you is, is that, there's nothing that, in any of this, that would require chemicals that would change?
No. So there is, uh, so the MBR, um, they use a flocculent is what they call it. So the, the, uh, suspended solids in effluent coming out, that makes biosolids. They're very light particles and so they don't settle out. So if you add a flocculent to it and that makes them stick together and they settle out. Uh, that's not, that's standard, uh, treatment for drinking water systems. Also, you primarily for surface water, not from wells.
And it breaks, and it breaks down in, in the surface. It's not a, a chemical.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it's a polymer, it, it, um, but yeah, that one wouldn't affect anything.
Well, then my second question is that for the ones that involve land application, I mean, you're talking about taking treated sewage basically and putting on land. I know we're talking about alfalfa, but I mean, looking at, with this rain and runoff and everything, you know, a lot of the problem Tico has now from when we had the, the train, the, what do you call them, round? Groundhouses and the oil and stuff, you know, that's seeped and that's gone a lot of places. So, uh, would, would a land application potentially lead us to some other problem of that nature where you have treated materials, uh, that are contaminating nearby farmland or getting back into hangman?
That, that has not been an issue with, with communities that do it. So the, the theory of, uh, land application or irrigation is that you only irrigate, uh, at the agronomic rate. So the rate, the, the plants are taking up water. So, in theory, the water that you irrigate never leaves the, the root zone of, of the crop. So that's why we're, we're limited. So our, our sizing was based on, uh, an inch and a half per week. So that, so the, the field is allowed to have an inch and a half per week. And this is, this is verified through, um, through studies. Once you, you select a site, ecology has a whole regiment of things that need to be tested. There's soils tests, there, you know, there, the water bearing capacity of the soil. The variety of things that have to be, um, verified before they will permit a site for, for wastewater application. But, yeah, so the, the water is never supposed to leave the root zone. So, as you mentioned, rain, so if it rains, then you can't irrigate. So if you, uh, if it rains half an inch, you can irrigate one inch. So there, there's a set amount of water that the field is allowed to take per week and it has to be pumped. As far as, you know, forever chemicals, that, so the, but it's irrigated. To, to irrigate, it has to meet class C standards. So, not for direct human contact, but it has been treated, it has been quarantined. And so this affected, it has to, so the bacteria levels have to be generally below two hundred, uh, colonies per thousand years. And it's a, so it has to meet certain treatment standards. So it's not like rotten, it doesn't have, you know, it doesn't have odor like it, like it would from, it's not like a second tank is being pumped out. There has been some concern in the past about, uh, micro contaminants, uh, like pharmaceuticals basically. And that's kind of an issue, but no, but it's at such low levels that it hasn't, it hasn't been regulated in any way so far. And it hasn't been an issue with anybody land wanting, yet. But it's one of those fringe issues that, that is discussed occasionally.
Well, my understanding was that, and again, I just was, had this discussion with someone last night. And so, um, he, he suggested that we do a little research. I believe it was Vermont or somewhere, um, back on the east coast, that, uh, they, they actually were doing a land application. Maybe it was set up differently or whatever, but it did lead to some lawsuits for their community because it did produce, um, harm to, to neighboring lands and so. So, I'm assuming this has been studied pretty well, what we're, what we're doing here?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, like Davenport, that's, that's what they do. They have aerated lagoons and they irrigate on the fields right next to the lagoon. Uh, there, there's some, some others. I'm not sure exactly, trying to think of others close by. I know, I know Davenport does it because we, we've done the permitting for them.
And this is about, the monitoring of all that, does that, is that similar to what our operators are already dealing with? Or does that add a lot more to that?
It's not extensive, no, no. It's basically, uh, just monitoring the moisters in the field. There are occasionally tests, they want to do soil samples, ecology wants soil samples every couple of years just to, uh, mostly to monitor salts because that can accumulate over time in the soils.
As far as all of these alternatives, is there one that's better as far as projected longevity? Thinking down the road, so we can avoid future costs for a longer period?
Uh, it's subjective. Uh, the, the bioreactor is a high level of treatment and so presumably would handle any new contaminants that ecology wants to really. Um, the aeration and irrigation, that avoids discharge to the creek altogether, but it, you know, your destruction on the field as we're, as we're discussing. So, if, you know, river keepers are happy because you're not discharging into the creek anymore, but, you know, there's other people and they have concerns, so.
Well, what I'm concerned about is future costs.
Sure.
For down the road for our community, if we set a system that even though may cost a little more upfront over the life of that system, it's gonna be cheaper for the, for the community, that's what I was asking.
Sure, sure. Uh, and we did, uh, include O and M costs. So we, we, at the table at the back of the report, uh, before the appendices. So there's about two thirds of the, that report is appendices. So, at the end of the report, there is a, we did a twenty year, um, net cost. So it includes O and M over twenty years plus the capital costs. So you can compute those. So, uh, for example, the, the aeration and irrigation, um, it is higher upfront cost, but very inexpensive to operate, so it has lower, lower operational costs.
Thank you. Now, the two solids de-watering on the back, is that in addition to these other alternatives?
Uh, the drying bed cost is already included. So, uh, alternative one and, and one, two and three, they all include, uh, the drying bed as a, as a cost already included.
Okay, so, so in four, the, the belt press would be included in that?
The, let's see, I think we put, we used the drying bed for four also.
Okay.
So we just assumed drying bed for all of the alternatives and if you want to upgrade the belt press.
So then these two just apply to number five?
These two, uh, no. Five is the only one that does not apply to in fact.
Okay.
So, and, and I'll, I'll bring that up, it's not a bullet point, but aerated lagoon, so all the other treatment, you remove the biosolids as you treat. So it's pulled out, it's consolidated on drying bed or belt press. In a lagoon, you don't deal with it, it basically settles to the bottom of the lagoon and stays there for maybe twenty years. But when you do have to harvest it or remove it, it will eventually build up uh, and will impact the volume, treatment volume of the lagoon. It's, it's a major deal, you basically have to hire a contractor and there aren't very many that do it because it takes, um, have dredging equipment that goes along the bottom that protects the liner that, that basically sets up the biosolids and then they have to be consolidated and disposed at that point. So, it's a long, you know, it's a twenty year cycle, but it's, it's a, a major capital expense whenever twenty years required, yeah.
So if you look at Fairfield, it's double in size.
Right.
Do you see any future changes, David, in the lagoons versus spreading for crop or where the state wants us to go?
Where's it go?
No, do they want to continue the lagoons or do they want to phase them out or do they have something?
No, they're gonna continue. Small communities, they're, um, ducks like it too.
Yeah, waterfowl.
Well, my, my big concern is kind of what Shelly was saying as far as, if you talk about Davenport, it's flat.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas we're all hills.
And it's drier.
And it's drier.
Oh yeah, they only.
Though there, yes, compared to here.
Take a twelve inches of rain a year compared to our twenty-nine.
Right. But I'm just concerned as far as, you know, the watering of it. You know, we do what, you know, inch and a half today, but then it turns around and we get dumped on like we have this week, then that's gonna push all of that downhill.
And the problem what we have is if it goes on a hillside there, that hard clay is about six feet down.
Right.
And then it can follow that right out and create a spring. So, um, it all depends on where you're gonna put your, uh, the sprinkler systems at.
Right, you see, it's put all this money into it and then say, oh, you know, a year down the road, it's not gonna work because of the clay and, you know, all the rain you get and it's, then you gotta do something else.
I personally like four, I know it's a little bit more money, but my, my, is in the long run, there's gonna be less maintenance.
Well, that's what I was looking at and some of the information that I've been able to read is some of the filters, if we have to change them, you just basically go and lift them out, put the new one in.
Yeah.
So the maintenance costs in the long run are, are better for us. And the other thing I'm looking at too is, do we even have any idea what our adjacent landowners or people around there, if they're willing to give us or sell us land? Or are they gonna go, sorry guys, we don't want that here, you can't have it?
Well, I think that's what you're gonna have to look at is now, kind of go through it, what can we do now?
Well, I kinda like the MBR system from everything I've been able to read. I think it may cost us a little more upfront, but I think twenty years from now, we're still gonna have a good working system.
And then you can add to it.
But it includes buying land too, right? It says assumes a four acre lagoon for storage.
You do need some storage for, for summer.
Most of those MBR systems, they're off the shelf parts too. So if you break something, you know, you could just basically go to the hardware store and get a new part. You don't have to have a, a custom part made or sent to you from who knows where.
But you still have to buy land from somebody.
Well, I think that's probably what we gotta start thinking here pretty quick.
Yeah.
Get some commitments.
Yeah, but we're talking four acre lagoon compared to sixty acres.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, I, I just wanted to clarify.
Right, but I'm saying, I mean, we have now, oh, that area down on the river and everything else, that would be easier to get. And that area for just a four acre, you're not dealing with the whole neighborhood and mountains and then it cools off quickly. Right.
Number four, aircraft territory, is that number four?
We're not gonna bring in aircraft territory?
We're gonna work it in New York.
Okay.
So, and then number four doesn't involve the, the drying beds, right? Which, I mean, the frame was very clear about, so I, I kind of like.
You will need, yeah, there, you, you need to do something with the biosolids. So you still need the digester and then you've gotta consolidate somehow, either drying beds or belt press.
But the drying bed, but the belt is included in it and it's figured in the drying beds and it's almost the same price.
So the belt would be included in the twenty-four?
Pretty cool, Shelly.
It's, it's a rounding error for.
But what's nice about the belt, you can work that any time of the year, rain, sun, and it really does a good job. It's really worth it.
Well, I think there's a lot of manufacturers showing up with these things too. So the more manufacturers we get, I can see prices coming down from competition.
Yeah.
So there's no alternative here that doesn't involve needing to acquire land?
It's just the amount.
So it's the amount?
Yeah.
And then, and the aeration, I love the aeration lagoons because they're great. And the ones I've seen, they even go beyond twenty years or something, thirty years. And they're only about four inches thick underneath. And, uh, but it all depends on what we put into it. And, uh, but it's the land, where are you gonna find sixty-nine acres of land?
Little railroad ground, that's not true. Thank you, sir.
So, the, the product in number two and number three coming out of the system is the same that goes into the creek or is land yet applied, correct?
For alternatives two, yes, yes, they, yeah, it's the same, same.
I think people were getting hung up on this fact that we were spraying the stuff on ground and that there was gonna be some effect on the ground. And I think it's clear to understand that that is also the same stuff that's going.
Going right into the creek, yeah.
It's clear, it's clear enough to go in the creek.
Right.
So, it's just a matter of when the application happens. And the first one, it happens during the winter. Okay, we're not gonna be sprinkling this time of year. Okay, in, in, in second, in number three. Okay, even, even, even if we have a crop applied, we're storing it now. Come May, when the ground warms up, that's when the sprinkling will happen.
And that, that's kind of a good idea, but on the irrigation system, it's all time in the summertime and when minerals like copper and selenium and mercury and all that, they go in, they stay in the ground, it builds up. Or in a creek, it gets diluted and flows down to the ocean. And so in, in the land, it builds up, especially copper.
Okay, well, we'll try not to publicize that too much. All right, good work guys, thanks. I mean, this was, yeah, this was very nice, thanks.
Good.
Really kind of slimmed it down for us.
Well, yeah, it is, I wrote a lot of that and it's still hard, it's hard for me to get through. So, you get lost in, in it. So, yeah, that's helpful to have some good reference. So you get lost in, in it, so it's, yeah, that's helpful to have some good reference.
Got you.
I got one question. On number four, what is, what do you, like, uh. Made the, uh, N B R with, steel, stainless steel? What'd you come up with for making it, concrete?
The, the N B R?
Yeah.
It, it comes pre-manufactured, but it has to be set, I assumed it would be set on a, on a concrete pad. And then we, uh, put a building over it. We, we assume C N U construction. So, I mean, that's one place where there could be some efficiencies if you wanted to do something other than C N U. Because that's, I mean, that's, that's a pretty significant expense to, to build a, building large enough to house it.
All right, we've got a lot of homework to do. Uh, the product coming out of the number four, is that mostly cleaner than what?
Typically, yes.
That's the best product, that's, like Mike alluded to down the road. It's, it's got a little bit of a, it takes care of the B F O S a little bit better than any other.
Right, yeah, the, the membranes, uh, so it's a, a higher level of treatment going through, so it, it's all in one box. But it basically goes through multiple treatment processes to get to the final, uh, layer, which is the, the membranes, which are. Uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of one micron in size. And so it's filtered through those, those membranes and you're, look, very, very clean.
So it might buy you some time down the road as far as.
Yeah, it, it would likely handle any, any future.
For the life of the machine, probably.
Yeah.
Have they, they got any idea on how, what the life expectancy of this thing is?
The, uh, the membranes are, uh, have a five year warranty on it. Uh, the rest of it, I don't know. So, uh, as, as you mentioned, I mean, it's, it's fully automated or highly automated, but it's, it's just, it's pumps and, you know, mechanical.
And this one is going to have to require a pre.
It needs a.
It can't, it can't handle a slug.
Right, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't handle peaks and valleys well, so it needs an equalization basin to, to even that out.
Well, we've got two tanks down there that.
They're going to be used, yeah.
So you have to build a dugout. Yeah. Good work, guys. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just tell us how long you would, those come back.
We'll come back every week. So, you know, like.
Well, that's, well, I'll try to, I'll try to get some feedback from the council, it's how they're doing this thing.
It was just a nervous thought on us, you know, just, you know, we did a month, six days, whatever. We, we, we decided before that, you know, talking with ecology, we wanted to give the best report as possible. Which is why we want to give you guys this full report.
This big good Christmas dinner conversation.
Everybody likes talking about waste.
All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good Christmas, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, guys. Okay, uh, wire connection fees.
The only thing I have, it's good. The only thing I have is you got three quarter inch. And, and, uh, so if people want to put in a sprinkler system, you're going to have to have one inch, so that needs to be upped a little bit. That's one reason why I said that, you know, a higher cost, because, um, that wasn't included. You only have a three and, three quarter inch connections.
How much would that increase the cost?
That would probably be about six, seven hundred dollars maybe.
Okay.
So that was my only thing. That's why I came up with about five thousand, because that's just about, you know, even.
Trying to shoot high.
Yeah, and then if you save money, that's funny. And, um, but, um, I, I think the connection should be that about because, um, let's face it, brass and stuff is going to go up.
Well, everything's going up, you're able to pass a moment. You know, and I'd rather go to five pound, which I agree with, and be happy than have to come back next week and go, hey, well, we're short, we got to have more.
Yeah.
Keep adding to it, because all people are going to just get irritated if we keep jacking that thing up. Shoulders, if we come up here, uh, and my feeling is if it's a contractor building a house, they absorb those fees.
Yeah.
Or something, whatever, it depends on the contractor or the developer, those fees, they get absorbed.
Shouldn't we be using one inch?
I like it, I like it because you never know when, uh, you're going to get, uh, I'll take for instance, uh, the two houses that are coming out. He just put a sprinkler system in, and fortunately, they, they did put one inch in there. And, uh, you never know what the people are going to do, um, in the future. And three quarter inch will not be able to do it.
That'd be a good idea that we'll pass that on.
Do we have a comparison of what it is in, in like sized towns?
Oh, it varies all over, uh, because Spokane's fifteen thousand. Smaller towns are probably about anywhere from four to six.
But you're, you're guessing at that, you don't know for sure.
No. But I know if it's fifteen for Spokane.
Oh, yeah, when you go to these conferences, you can hear some of them, some of the members that are rolling out of places and you just go, wow, like, we have a mutant.
So it's three thousand now, and sewer is also.
So you want to bump it five?
I would, I would.
Do you think sewer, thanks, guys. You want to do anything with sewer or, or is that?
I think for sewer, you're, you're pretty good for that price, but sewer two thousand.
Okay.
You're talking about jumping to two thousand dollars. I mean, it's not like we have a lot of, a lot of the places that are put in or people are building them themselves, so there's no contractor to. And then the contractor passes that price down, and are we going to encourage building and developing the lots we have with that?
Here's the problem on that, the city has to pay, this is where everybody has their opinion on it. Is when they come in and we put in, what, eight million dollars worth of water and sewer lines, somebody has to pay for that eventually. And so if you go, and, and I know I want to go as cheap as possible can, but somebody has to pay that big pipe to be put in there.
Okay, but Stephen suggested four, and you want to go five?
I say five for water and two for sewer.
I think in the long run, it's going to balance out, make things, we don't want to have to go backwards. On what we charge, we got to make another amendment, uh, because like you say, prices are going to go up. We don't know where they're going, so a year from now, is four thousand going to be enough, or are we not such a value, putting those in until we increase it again?
Well, let me ask, that line that they put in over, um, is it Lindsay? The one that's short distance there? How much did that cost? Just put that, when Steve put that, how much did he pay for that?
I have no idea.
Well, I would venture to say it's probably about eight thousand dollars, total. And so, yeah, so if you go real cheap for connections for sewer, you know, you don't come out. So what are we paying now for this connection? Two thousand for connection? Yeah, that's just, that's mine.
I think that works for sewer, I mean, really, that's not, got a lot of parts involved in it.
You know, it's just the cost of the material. And, and I think it was thirty five thousand just to put in what we did right behind my house for synths. So.
Yeah.
And then we put in what? Four connections on there, but we got reimbursed eight thousand dollars.
Guys, want to just kick this round for, I mean, nothing's going to, I mean, nothing has to happen in this house, so.
Again, kicking down the road, um, well, Shelley would like to know what other communities are charging, which is nice to know, but it's not really relevant to Tico. My feeling is I agree with Dave, five of two, and let's stay with that, and I bet we can go a long time before we have to discuss it.
We thought that a lot of us done too.
Yeah, and it didn't work.
I guess I would rather go in increments. I think people would understand, you know, if we're saying, you know, we made it, was it two years ago, three years ago, that we bumped it to three? And, um, I just.
Yeah, that was an inflation thing, the prices were going crazy. Stabilized a little. Okay, that's fair.
And this really doesn't affect, excuse me, everybody in town, it just affects the new buildings and the construction. Island in town, or replacement or something goes, goes south, so it's not like it's five thousand dollars on everybody in town.
No, I know, I, I understand that, but we're a place where we want to encourage building, especially with the.
Well, that, that's not going to change the encouragement.
Okay, yeah.
So if we were to do the, whatever price, uh, is decided on for the three quarter inch line. I think the way it reads right now is that it's, you know, there's a certain number of things that are covered by that installation. And then anything above beyond that is extra, anyway. So if somebody puts in a two inch line, they don't get to do that for, for price. Like, they, we keep, we keep the extra costs in mind when, when, when pipe, a bigger pipe is used, the bigger foot is used. Uh, you know, leaders and all the different fixtures, so just so you understand, you can also keep it that way, you know.
But if, but if you do that, because like a water meter now, brass one inch is three hundred bucks. The yoke that it goes into is one hundred and ninety five. And, uh, so, um, it's a huge increase from the three quarter. And so, um, you say, okay, what you're saying is, is we're, we're keeping it forty two, and then you pay the extra?
Not the land owner.
Well, if we have a basic size and somebody wants something bigger, then right now, they would already be going above beyond that two thousand to get.
We pass that on.
Yeah. So you can do that too.
Yeah.
There are alternatives.
I mean, on a water conservation level, with some areas, especially in the drier areas, they are going three quarter inch, that's the standard thing. Because you can't get any more out of it and it falls through, so that's a conservation thing. And, uh, but telling people they can't irrigate their lawns, that's, you know, it's kind of rough.
Okay, so we want to move this or keep it?
About where you said, the forty five hundred.
And then, and then make a clause that anything larger, you pay the extra cost. On the hook up fee that, you know, it's in, it's worded in there.
So you're saying forty five hundred for a three quarter inch?
Yeah.
And then make an upgrade.
It's not an upgrade if you're, if you're small.
Yeah, they want to pay for it.
Okay, do you want to give a motion?
I make a motion, we may put it at forty five and then have it in there that, uh, if they want upgrades, then they pay for the extra upgrade.
Which has always been done anyways.
Second.
Second, Mike's second. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of motion, stay. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Everybody said no? Great.
No, I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, passes. Okay. Very nice, okay, thanks, guys. Uh, new business, Whitman Recovery Community Center. And, I think I have to move. You got a little slideshow. Hi, sorry.
Hello.
It's been a little hectic.
Oh, no, Mike.
Just have to yell.
Looking for it, yeah.
Closer.
Yeah, closer. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Megan Guido and this is Carlos Ramirez. We are with Whitman Recovery Community Center. We thank you for the opportunity to present very briefly about our new organization that serves Whitman, Whitman County. Um, I think as she's putting up the, the slides. So I would like to just, uh, provide an overview of who we are as a recovery, um, community.
Is that going to hurt? How do you?
Um, it's pretty dark, but I. Do you want the flash light on my phone? Um, so, and you'll just forward that for me?
Yeah, just as a.
Go ahead. So to tell you, we are based in Pullman, Washington. Um, our service area is again Whitman County. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit, we're incorporated in the state of Washington. We exist to provide peer support to those who are curious or new to recovery. So this is recovery from substance use, alcohol, mental health issues. Um, we are not a treatment center, so I want to make it very clear that we do not provide treatment. We are a peer support organizations. So these are peers that are in recovery from substance use or mental health issues themselves. And in our vernacular, these are folks that have their own life experience, that they are providing support with fellow peers. Um, our philosophy is we embrace all paths to recovery, so recovery from addiction looks different and is different for everybody. So, um, we meet people where they are at in their recovery journey. And all services are free and open to everyone, and anyone can refer. So you do not, um, need to pay for any services, we do not bill for insurance, it's all free and open to anyone. Next slide. So what we believe, we strive to provide a safe community. This is for folks, again, who are, um, in recovery from substance use and mental health. And we believe there's all different types of paths to recovery, it does not look the same for each person. So some people may find A A, um, and twelve step programs very effective for them, some others may not. Um, we believe in what they call harm reduction. So we believe that people are going to use, and we want to make sure that they are, uh, as safe as possible in that case. For instance, we give away free naloxone, you may be familiar with this, it's also called Narcan. And it's for folks who, um, uh, have an overdose with an opioid. And basically it reverses the, the overdose, um, by creating airway for them. Um, reversing the, the, uh, depression of their respiratory system. So naloxone has proven to be very effective, and as an organization, we want to make that, uh, medication available throughout. The county of Whitman County. Um, and we'd love to talk to you further about that, if there's a, an opportunity or a place to, uh, work with the city of Tico to provide, uh, free naloxone. So how we got started, we opened in May of twenty twenty five, we are a very new center. And we're affiliated with Leitao Recovery Center in Moscow, which has been in operation for ten years. Um, we're funded by the Washington State Healthcare Authority. And we are, as I described earlier, what they call a recovery community organization. We have one director, myself, uh, and then one, um, paid certified peer specialist with lived experience herself, she is in recovery. And then we have about twenty volunteers, um, many of them in recovery themselves or who feel strongly or passionate about the issue of recovery. Because so many people have been touched by addiction in their family. And they want to be part of the, um, recovery community and ensure that people continue to, um, stay sober. And stay in a, um, a community of support. So we have about twenty of those volunteers. We, um, the need is quite clear, uh, Whitman County Public Health Needs Assessment that was conducted not too long ago. Shows that opioid and substance use, alcohol, mental health, they're a major concern throughout the county, in all of the cities of Whitman County. We have nothing like this in a four county area. So when, um, the healthcare authority said, we want to fund you, they said, that's a no brainer, because you have nothing like this in the immediate area. That is a safe place for folks that are in recovery, that can, um, work with other peers who have been in recovery for a long time. Who are living a sober life and can provide that kind of coaching. That so many, um, studies have shown that, that the, the power of peer recovery is very effective. We also know there's an epidemic of loneliness, and we hear about that, um, through various studies and through folks that, um, come to our center. That, um, particularly folks that are in recovery from substance use or mental health, feel isolated. And are maybe in rural areas where they don't feel that they can talk to peers that have been going through it themselves. So we provide that safe space for them, um, for a diversity. So we provide that safe space for them, um, for a diversity of people and what they're going through. And then folks that are maybe sober, curious, who want to, um, start a different kind of lifestyle where they are not actively using and want to live a sober, um, lifestyle and want to learn how to do that. So those are the tools that we provide. The kind of services we provide, as I said, is that peer coaching, which is so effective. And so someone like Bree Davis, who is our, uh, certified peer specialist, works one-on-one with folks who are maybe new to recovery and want to maintain that sober lifestyle. We provide resources and navigation for treatment, um, which is in, uh, desperate need. If we, as a, um, community and as a county are in desperate need of treatment resources. As many of you know, the closest, uh, available treatment sources are Spokane. Um, we offer weekly, um, activities like recovery Dharma. We have Tai Chi, we have beating classes, we have recovery yoga. So folks that are in recovery are looking for healthy alternatives to what they used to do, spending their time using, right? So they need to find healthy alternatives and they need to build community. So our weekly offerings are a way for them to do that and they have actually, I'm really proud to say, are taking off. Um, we have 12-step recovery groups that you would expect to see, such as AA. We're looking for facilitators for Narcotics Anonymous and Coda is Codependence Anonymous. Um, we offer trainings to the community like QPR, um, Question, Persuade, uh, Refer and Mental Health First Aid. We have a food pantry, uh, with dog and cat food. There are many folks that, um, obviously with the, uh, the recent, um, changes in the SNAP program that came forth and said, we need support. And then, of course, we have that Narcan, Narcan box, um, that we'll have a picture of here in the next slide that looks like a, a newspaper, um, from olden days, a newspaper dispenser. Um, but we have it filled with, um, Narcan and other kinds of harm reduction type, um, materials uh, that are available for free, anybody can take one. And as I said, we want to make these boxes available throughout Whitman County, including Tico. Um, and we're hoping that we can talk to someone. We have made great connections through Carlos, who is our outreach coordinator, through, um, his, uh, perseverance going around to different coun, our different towns in the county. We're making connections and letting people know that we exist. And then we want to provide more of those outreach type, um, events here in your communities so that we're, we're realistic. We know people are not going to necessarily travel to Pullman to be around peers. So we want to bring some of that here to your community. And we're also making a great connection with Jennifer, with, um, Healthy Tico. And, um, yeah, so want, this is part of our outreach effort. And the next, uh, slide just shows our QR code, our Facebook and Instagram. We have weekly calendars that people can check out on Facebook. And then, of course, we have a website, so, um, Carlos, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, so on that, after what Megan was saying, I travel a lot into all of the rural towns of Whitman County. I've been as far as Malden and Rosalia and La Crosse, going to various community centers, libraries, post offices, putting out postage and talking to individuals about possibly family members or friends of friends that they know that are in recovery or struggling with an addiction. Um, I have had, I have lived experience, it's an experience with my, with, uh, Latin culture. Drinking and being alcoholic is very rampant in my culture and something that I experienced in my sophomore in college. So I had some experience with that. And so I want to connect with others who know somebody who might be experiencing it themselves, that there is a support here. There are resources that want to see them sober, that want to see them get better. And that we want to be with them along their journey.
Just wanted you folks to know that it exists, we're a new organization and please reach out if you have any questions. And again, I'm really happy to do that. Megan Guido, uh, I have some, uh, literature that I found. Uh, I'll just pass those around along with the cards. We did look at that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, you're welcome, guys.
Nice to join.
Thank you.
Okay. Carry on. Okay, thank you, guys. Drive safely, please. Thank you. Uh, we didn't, uh, you guys want to go to B? We want Christine Keispi's Crossroads Community Center. Do we want to do that or do we just want to send it to that next meeting when she's got some more time? Great, okay. Uh, C, budget ordinance, budget amendment, ordinance 908. That's the transfer, the cleanup of funds at the end of the year, right?
Yes, for any year's budget amendment. So what you're looking at is the transfer of the order and sewer utility taxes over to the agenda fund. Um, the street fund and water fund and fire department tender water fund, that's how you run the rental. Um, the sewer to sewer reserve is one that we no longer need that sewer debt service fund. That was moved into sewer reserves, so we need to, that was all approved. It just needs to be, uh, done through, we have them now, so it's moving from one fund to another. Um, cemetery endowment to cemetery, this is the amount over and above what the endowment is and we're supposed to start moving that on a regular basis, the honors office suggested yearly. So every year it should go back down to, unless somebody asks to endowment, it's at 111,000. 111,000, 111 dollars and 28 cents. So every year we're going to be moving that over. Um, and for amending revenues and expenses, well, we are significantly different than what we expected to be with the budget than we need to amend our revenues and expenses. Uh, we are about, not quite 100,000 dollars more in water than what we expected, uh, our budget last year. We are about 100,000 dollars for sewer, um, more than, uh, we did, uh, have a, an amendment to our agreement with the, uh, Wash Dock for the airport grant so that needs to be included here in our budget amendment, uh, that was taken up to 750,000. We have not spent all of that, but that's what our agreement, our agreement says. That doesn't mean that we will spend that, that just means that's what our agreement said, so that's our budget. Uh, cemetery, we started the year with quite a bit more than we thought we would because we weren't sure at the end of last year if we would receive a donation before the end of the year. And it turns out that we did. So, um, our budget for this year is around 130,000. That's much closer for revenues and expenditures than what we traditionally have proposed, which I think was around 8,900. Uh, salary amendments, uh, for the public work supervisor includes, uh, increases in this, uh, hourly rate because of certifications and also some overtime. Uh, for myself, uh, is about almost 1,100 dollars for therefore, um, overtime. And for the, uh, deputy clerk treasurer was about, about 100 dollars.
Which just, where did you?
Uh, well, he doesn't have, he, we don't need to amend his salary because it's not more than what it was projected to be. This is not the budget, this is an amendment, we don't need to amend his salary.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, um, it's not there. So that's that. Any questions?
So on the revenues and expenses, I can, so when you're saying the, the water, um, we, we were short or we had?
No, we have much more income than we had anticipated. Um, for the budget last year, uh, our, our starting, uh, amount for this year was much, much more than we, we had anticipated. I think we anticipated our starting balance to be around like 38,000 and it was actually like 124. So we, we really should amend our revenues and expenses to reflect that more accurately.
So these are basically, under the revenues and expenses are all four of those reflecting, um, more revenues?
Correct.
All, all four of them?
Yes.
Okay. And then under the salaries, those are more expensive.
Yes.
And, and, and it's, um, yeah, I, I have no problem with the, the clerk treasurer, the deputy clerk treasurer with that overtime, we talked about that in the beginning, and such, we can work through that hourly. But I guess that number for, for the public work supervisor at 66,000, that's the number that was in my head and that's what created my question earlier. So, um, so is this, would that have to be ongoing or how much of that is overtime?
Uh, I think about 2,000 of that.
Cause that's last, I saw last year's and I think it was about 2,000 last year.
Yeah, yeah.
So 64, so, so there's not that much that is really an, an increase for that, you know, at this point, because we just got those.
Right, and, and because we have, well, the one certification he's had for a little while, but the, um, mostly we balance to the line, uh, or sorry, to the fund level when it comes to the budget. But for salaries, you have to be pretty precise. So that's why we bring it into the amendment process.
So when, uh, a member of the discussion last year, I believe, was that, uh, it was like 2,000 per Stevens with the overtime because of the snow again, so we'd have that year, but, but he also takes some of that in comp time.
Right, right.
And so in this, uh, so the
He's, he's chosen to take more in overtime this year versus just building a comp time. Uh, so it took to be paid for it instead of doing comp time, I would say.
So less comp time this year than the previous year, was that what you said?
Yeah, less comp time and, and just be paid for it already.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 908, amending the 2025 budget.
Okay, in a motion, the second, Dave? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, save sign? Great, motion passed, thank you. All right, moving on. Mr. Hale, airport reserve allocation.
I think that, uh, our clerk treasurer can better explain that than me.
Oh, okay. So we have $3,000, uh, in a reserve, um, sub-site in the airport fund as a reserve, uh, amount for projects. And so, um, asking the council to, uh, agree to spend that $3,000 for the lighting project this year.
Okay, questions on that, guys?
So the grant doesn't cover all your other, this is
This is some other stuff that came up and we had the $3,000 in overhead money there. So we could use that and just help us down the road. We don't have to come back to the city for more money again.
The money, the money was specifically, it was donated for the airport? So it's not coming out of our?
No, it's not coming out of
Specifically for a project, it didn't want to come into general operating?
And that was donated this year?
No.
So
Several years ago.
So where was that reflected in our budget in the past?
Uh, it's been in the beginning balances and as of the, um, audit, they want to see reserve balances broken out. And so it's been in the reserve balance for a project to come up.
So is, so going forward, will it be easier to see and identify that if it's broken out?
Um, well, I, I tried to do that on this year's, but if you look at, at reserved, um, beginning balances and reserve ending balances on this budget, but if you, uh, pass this, you won't see it at all because it'll be used.
Okay, so is it under, so if I go back on the budget and I look under that airport things, it shows a reserve of 3,000 dollars?
It should show that in the beginning and, or the beginning balances because I think we didn't put it in any balances because thinking that the council was probably going to pass allowing that, so.
Got an idea for that, Mike?
Well, we fell into a good deal when we thought we needed more cans and parts for the runway lights. And there's a old construction trailer out there and Steven went and looked at it and here's all the ones we need, brand new in boxes. So that saved us a bunch of money. Apparently way back when and the, we, the history of that airport is crap too. But apparently they bought everything they needed to fix the airport, but they only did this half and then they put everything in the trailer and forgot about this half. So the only other expenditure we may have going down the road and it's going to be spring or later now because of the ground is, uh, permits to do it correctly and have somebody come out and, an electrician to look at it. And it, we may may not have to run more wire. We've got to go out and look at the conduit, see what's in it. But we have all the parts for the lights and the cams, so we're ahead of the game there. Uh, once we get that trailer empty, I'd like to surplus it and sell it. That's, you know, another couple bucks in the, in the kitty there. Um, we don't have to do fuel pump yet, it's coming, I'm assuming probably middle of January, it'll be installed. And that's that, uh, DOP carb loan. And the only other thing is, and I'm working on it slow but sure, we've got two airplanes that are parked in the crash zone out there. They've been there for a while. And the FAA says, you know, we'd really like you to move those. So if you go back to the airport's original ALP plan, it shows a specific spot for tie-downs. So that's what I'm working on, I go from one to the other. And that's not going to cost us anything. In fact, if I can, I might increase the revenue by, if you want to tie down for a month or a year or whatever, you pay a little bit of money for that, if you're coming in for a weekend or two days, it's free, so it's going to be there longer than, than the ALP. And that money goes back into the airport.
Okay, great, thanks, Mike, good job. TIB preservation project, yes?
Can we make a vote on that?
Cool. Damn, I missed it, but that, all right. At this point, I'll, um, entertain a motion to approve the reserve allocation.
I'll make a motion to, to approve.
Second, Dave? Any more discussion, all those in favor?
Well, I'm not sure I understand, so that money's been sitting there for a few years and Mike, you've noticed there, but you because you mentioned I was running out of money.
I kind of sort of knew about it and then it kind of sort of went away.
So just because there wasn't a project, you didn't do it out of all of that money?
For, for, you know, without additional funding. So my thought was let's leave it there until we can really use it as best we can for what we're doing. It just, I don't know, made more sense.
But it followed more closely.
So I, I pulled up in here the airport from the budget, um, and so it would just be, oh, there's, there's 3,000 airport restricted beginning balance? Is that the, is that it? Okay.
Well, one time we were going to maybe try to buy a lawnmower so we could load a log truck or something out there. I mean, we, we talked about it.
Yeah.
The FUD was pretty, um, specific, he just didn't want it just to go to anything. He wanted kind of to be able to have
He wanted to build something, that is what he wanted.
Here I go.
I think Tom bought the lights phone back then, didn't he? They've been there for a long time.
Before me now. Okay, okay, uh, senior or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, motion passes, thank you. Now we'll go to the EETIB preservation project, SOQ's qualification selections.
So it has sent out the statements of qualification for community engineering and consulting, uh, pillar engineering and the TVAH, uh, engineering for you to look at. Um, this is the project, I'm not sure if, you know, talked about this a while back, but it's, I think so. It's, it's doing the pavement preservation on a large part of, uh, town over by Henkel Street. So it's not part of our six transportation plan. It's, it's part of Transportation Improvement Board helping us preserve what we've already done.
And that was the purpose of it, so that we wouldn't address that with our transportation schedule we have set up now.
Right, no, because it's almost a million dollars.
Oh dear.
Yeah, once you get it paved, they will act to maintain it. And they, yeah, and they wanna keep it that way.
A million dollars?
That's, that's, that's a problem.
Also, it's a, it's a lot. It's, it's up on, it's up on my own town, isn't it?
It's a pickle, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I, I saw the, I saw the actual streets named and it's a lot, so. Okay, uh, S O Q selection, which is we have to approve the engineer, correct? It involves, you saw the three applications, um, community, um, T V D H and-
Keller.
Keller. You guys got any qualms? Posits, qualms?
I'd like to stay with, what is it, C E C, which is Matt. He's familiar with what's going on and I'd like to at least keep somebody on board that knows what the heck we're doing.
Yeah, I'd like to Steve John of Venocia, like, he's like that H D. T D H. He's a video, really good job over there. Yeah.
Well, that'll do us a good job. I just think that we tend to know.
One of those, one of those two, I was- We, we have, we have to do the process legally to, to make sure we've looked through it.
The fees are, I didn't read through that part of it. Are the fees somewhat for all of them?
I didn't see any.
I-
Yeah, the one thing, it's strictly-
Yeah, you are, you are allowed to choose whoever you wish to work with for the reasons that are important to the council.
The, the information sheet sample is just P R. This is our company.
So we're not working out-
And I like the third one because it was employee owned, but I didn't know, what do you, what do you, you know, whether that's- Is that, no, the third one, but just, the way that came to me, the third one, I didn't, or so is the third one? Oh, was it? Yeah. Oh, okay, we can save that right.
Dave, you guys are up.
Well, unless have you worked with all three of them?
I, I have not. Um, obviously I've worked with Nat who for the community, as all of you have. Um, the other two, I know only that they have a good reputation. That's all I know about them.
Entertaining motion. Accept one.
We have to make a motion. We go with whatever, Matt.
Okay, sent through, uh, yes. Community, okay?
Second.
Motion second. Any more discussion? Posits, favors, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, six zero. Okay. Uh, cemetery endowment request.
So, um, we submitted a request to the cemetery endowment committee earlier this year and they, they approved that, but they really just wanna do one check at the end of the year for the things that they will cover with the city. And so this letter and the supporting documentation really just goes from mid-September till now. So this is our last request for the year. Um, so, uh, normally we budget around thirty-six thousand dollars for non-governmental contributions. I think with this request, which is eleven thousand three seventy-two, I think the last one was around there. Uh, that would bring up, I might have a copy of that last letter. I do. The last one was fifteen thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, and then this one's for eleven thousand three seventy-three. And what they cover are things that, um, because of projects et cetera that have been done, now costs the city more, you know, so if you put in a pressure booster pump, now you're paying for a lot more, uh, water and fertilizer and all the things that go with it. That means you have more ground hours, but we actually are, are fairly low in hours per year this year. Um, and that has allowed us to do very regular pest control applications for borrowers. Uh, and we continue to do the marker repairs, which, uh, the last time that I did this, I thought they were giving us, I said last year's rate. Well, last year they gave us last year's rate and so that was a thousand dollars a day. This year's, last year's rate is two thousand dollars a day and other entities are paying twenty-five hundred dollars a day. So we're still getting a significant rate, but I kind of wanted to clarify my mistake from my last. Uh, but it doesn't, you do need to approve it to go, to be presented to the cemetery endowment committee.
Okay. Uh, some-
I'll make a motion that we accept. So I'm playing it.
Endowment request?
Set it.
Mike, second. In your discussion, all those favors, say aye?
Aye.
Motion, opposed, same side? Great. Motion passes. Okay, express, first bill paid.
Okay, um, so I don't necessarily expect you guys are gonna make a decision on this tonight, but I put the entire master agreement in here. This is the one system that interfaces with Springbrook Express, which is the software system that we use in the office. That would allow us to change over from Alt Pay, which is the third-party pay that we use now. Um, and then that would, uh, streamline our system and we would build electronically except for the people who don't want that or can't accommodate that. So it would kind of like Jennifer said, would get us into the, at least the twenty-twenty's, I think. And, uh, for it, also we can, there's, there are a lot of different options with it. So people can get notifications by text. They can email notifications. You can pay your bills on your phone with a text message. So, uh, you, it'll tell you what it is. So if you have, you know, the water went crazy and you have a twelve-dollar overage, you can see that right there and make that decision to pay your bill. Uh, you can also, uh, set it up with bill pay at your bank. So all the people that currently do that, and right now, um, we send out the bills to everybody. They pay through bill pay. When that comes to us, we have to either have anticipated that, which we do with a fair amount of people, or we have to reprint the bill. It is a large portion of our citizens who pay with their bank bill pay, which is actually, if they continue doing that, is the least expensive option for using the system. It's like fifty-nine cents a transaction. Right now, the least amount you can pay for a transaction is, I believe, two ninety-five. So, um, and that's just the way it is. Um, so there are, the, the main thing that I really want to draw your attention to, um, there are a couple of pages. I mean, you should read through the whole thing, but the, the differences that you're gonna see are on these pages, the ones that say exhibit A and I read exhibit B. And one of them shows you the rates that it would charge if, if it was paid by the citizen. And one of them shows you the rates that it is charged if it is paid by the citizen. So, um, exhibit, well, they call them both exhibit A, so that's not super useful. But, um, if you look down credit card, credit slash debit card transaction, one of them says three point five percent of transaction amount or a minimum of U S D three dollars. That's if the citizens pay it. So if you put citizen on, on that, you'll know. The other one is if the city pays it. Um, I would suggest that the city should pay it. The reason being, it costs us more than a dollar just to send a bill out to everybody right now. Um, and so if we, especially if we worked hard at getting people and they would help us, Express Bill Pay would help us get people switched over. Um, and they would, uh, if, if we could get people encouraged to use their, um, bank bill pay, that's fifty-nine cents to use the system to pay the bill. Uh, so I think, uh, that setting it up to begin with is, it's twenty-two hundred dollars for setup and configuration. It's five hundred and fifty dollars onsite per day. I, I think that it's a, a one or a two day, but if you just wrap it up to two day, then that's another, you know, we're talking about thirty-three hundred dollars at this point. Um, but then you have to pay for airline and hotel. Last time when we looked at this, we just estimated it at five thousand dollars. So we're paying six thousand dollars a year just for envelopes and postage right now. So if you were to approve this, it would take six to eight weeks for them to be able to schedule somebody to come out and train us. And, yeah, so it, it takes a minute because a lot of municipalities are making the leap to do this. Uh, but the sooner, if you approve it, the sooner we can do it, the better, because then that's, those are months we're not paying for the postage. Um, and we should be able to recoup our costs in as little as a year.
Will they pay motel, hotel rooms?
Uh, we do, yeah. So they probably have to stay at the casino or whatever or something. But that's, that is what all of this is. And they would make it pretty, as easy as they could make it on us to come out, train us, help us to get people switched over. Um, and I, I think that in short order, like, this is really where we need to go.
You're talking three dollars for people to pay that thing?
Well, if they chose to pay using a debit or credit card, then for the city, it's a dollar fifteen. That's why I think it's, it's worthwhile for the city to do it instead of that. Because we're, we're, those are costs that, uh, you know, if we budget what it costs per citizen, I think we can average out. It's not gonna be more than what we're already paying to build them now. And also we can figure out how to send a newsletter online too. So then there's, there's little hidden costs that eventually we don't have.
And a newsletter, you're gonna have to really, really explain it.
Yeah.
I mean, or really, because that's gonna people, it's gonna get, get confused over it.
There'll, there'll be a lot of teaching for the, probably the first six months, no doubt. Uh, but anyway, I mean, like I said, you guys don't have to make a decision on it tonight. I just wanted to put it in.
We've been talking about this for, what, about two years off and on?
Yeah.
But, but everybody does have the option to not do that.
They do have the option to not do it or if they can't do it.
Dinosaurs that are, that you're waiting for us to die, so you can move up your system.
Did you come in front of the open?
Me? So, uh, if, if we make a decision to go ahead and move ahead on this, we could make a decision about who pays that fee later, presumably, but it goes, but you said we can-
I agree. So, yeah, whether we send it to us or not.
All right. Well, I, I don't really, we've been talking about this for quite a while. I, I, I'm likely to make a motion that we go ahead and go forward with this, so I'm motioning that we go forward. So there.
I'll second it.
Okay, so you, so you wanna, you, okay, even though you're not gonna participate.
Say yes.
Uh-huh.
I might learn.
Well, I, join twenty-twenty, right? Okay, it's been moved in second. Any more discussions? You second now, okay? Any more discussion? All those favors, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
So there you go.
I, that was less painful than what we thought.
I don't wanna keep putting out so many things. We've got a lot of things.
Well, no, I mean, like I said, we, we come, we come to it, right? Sat in here and stuffed envelopes one night and we, there was like four of us and you were putting envelopes in. I'm just, yeah, we, we really have progressed beyond this as a society, but for most of us.
You got, well, and I like, like with your visibility, you can go on and look and see kind of like how much energy you're using. So, so it sounds like-
You still get the same information.
Yeah, but it's just like, maybe I better run out and turn off my lights on side, you know? So, so I think, I like the idea that it, you know, you have active information.
Okay, yeah. Okay, uh, announcements and reports. That's the past now. Mayor's report. Uh, uh, for those of you, Ree, Shelley went to the elected officials conference, their workshop up at Airway Heights last week. It was pretty, pretty informational and really eye-opening in, in a lot of different ways.
Right. Especially for me being due.
Right. One of the things they did was, they presented a bunch of scenarios and then we had to tell them what, what you would do and every, you just couldn't say, insult your attorney every time. For those of you who may or may not know, a city employee had a medical situation happen ten days ago. And Jeff is still in the hospital in Spokane, going through rehab. Uh, he'll, his main plan is to get home, uh, within a couple of days, maybe by, by the first of the next week or something like that, so.
By end of Friday.
Yeah, he's, he's, yeah, and, and it's, as he gets outlier, I think they try to move him out quicker. So, uh, he's, uh, they're kicking his tail on physical therapy, so, uh, he's, wants to get back at it. In the meantime, uh, we brought in Andy who, um, you're gonna have to help me with his last name. Pinstancio, who worked, he worked for the city for a week. Oh, before he found out the sewer was not his gig, right?
He was the tree guy.
He's the tree guy. And we brought him in and, uh, Jeff, uh, Steven's getting him trained up on the snowplow and I'm gonna get trained up on the snowplow, so there'll be three of us to jump in on that in the event that it gets cold enough to snow again.
So an interesting thing on, on Jeff, as I thought about the other day, is, is you're gonna get a doctor's note saying he can come back?
Certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's part of the, he's gotta be cleared.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, with, with, he's, he's fine. They, there's, um, some employees have donated him sick leave, so he'll be covered through the first of the Jan, first of January, I think. And then I think that's when his sick time runs out, but I'm just guessing on that, so. So, uh, Andy's just in as needed right now.
Would he have any interest in taking full time?
We hired him for it.
I know.
And then he didn't like the sewer, which is kind of a big deal.
I don't know what you're gonna do with Jeff when he comes back, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's still-
This really worked out very well with Andy at this point because his tree trimming business has slowed way down. And in fact, the city's, they're utilizing medical, get some trees that we need to take care of, so.
Which brings up a thing, uh, on the trees, and since he's a tree trimmer, that one that we were talking about in front of, uh, Alex Overton, it's come over more, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that's in his capabilities, but we'll, I'll, I'll put that on Steven's and we'll see if we can't-
It's gone, it's come over another foot, right?
Right, so, okay.
I'll clean it up if somebody knocks down.
Okay. Uh, I believe that's all I have. Okay. Uh, let's go with you guys' report, okay? And I'll come back to Eliza if that's all right. Mike, you got anything? Make sure these are reports. I don't want any new business coming up. Mike, I think.
Nothing to report. Just waiting for a new guest to open and get the lights lit.
Ree?
Nothing. Um, well, I, I thought it was okay to bring up new initiatives during this time too, that we have, that part of our policy. So, um, I just, um, I don't know that it's new business or something, we can make new business. But, um, I did wanna ask about the L and I reports, uh, or the L and I finds, the, the second portion, I think it was told that we would know in November if they were gonna knock that down. Did we ever hear about that?
That's part of mine.
Okay, so that, so that's that, okay, then we'll hear. See, I think, because usually you go first, so. So, um, and then I, I guess it's just a follow-up because I, I got asked by a citizen, um, about, we had, there's a property down by the church that, um, is supposed to be putting in a mobile home and they come in and ask for extensions to live in their RV. And I think they should be coming up on that second extension.
Yes, I agree.
Um, and, and we, it, it seemed like when they came in last time, I thought it was just, okay.
I think they renewed in July.
Okay, okay. So they're, and I just was hoping they're making progress so that they get, are they aware?
We're not sure about that, but we know they're coming on their due date.
All right, and then I just, well, I, I, the report was that, um, you mentioned the one we went to in Airway Heights and then the Port of Whitman and, uh, Avista also had a gathering last week for elected officials. And it was a very, um, it was, it was really a neat thing. A couple of things stood out to me that I thought was encouraging and, and, and thought-provoking. Uh, one is, is people are talking about their towns, you know, everybody, you're gonna hear what you wanna hear at those, right? I think if you're a council member, you're gonna hear things that are gonna bolster like, okay, this is what we have to do with budgets and be careful. And then maybe from a different perspective, you know, we're gonna, this is where we need to charge ahead and it's okay if we spend money. So you're gonna hear what you wanna hear, but- So you're going to hear what you want to hear, but, but I, I thought there was a good balance of both those things. I thought a, a lot of the communities who have been through some similar things, successes, some challenges, were saying, let's stay positive. Let's, let's look at what we need to do to go ahead. Um, however, with something Art Swanick, who, if I'm saying his last name correctly, he, he is, uh, county commissioner, uh, and he's been around here a lot, he comes a lot to, like, Slipper Gulch and most of you know him. Uh, we, there was a discussion about, people were sharing, what is a challenge for your community or what is a challenge that, that you guys face? And he brought up something that I thought about a lot and he was, he said revenue. He said, you know, revenue is always a challenge for every community, but he said even now in the current climate, and I paraphrase him what he said, because I probably heard what I wanted to hear out of it, but, um, he, he, he said that, you know, revenues are much superior than they've been in the past and, um, that, that it's going down the road with where the state's visions are and what small towns are and then on the federal level, that, um, our small communities are going to be more challenged than ever. And he said, one of the challenges that councils, and I'm sure I've heard him say the word council, but in particular is, we're going to be, with town and communities, we're going to be very careful not to spend beyond your means. And you're going to have to be very thoughtful about that. And, um, so that kind of stuck with me a little bit, but then also like listening to the mayor, new mayor, Rosalia and others just, you know, is, is trying to find the positive and working together for that. So made me excited about the things that we've talked about, the golf course and some of those, so I look forward to what's ahead for us.
Okay, thanks, Mike?
I was going to ask about, but maybe, maybe Eliza, that part of her report, why don't you let Eliza go first? But I was just going to ask about our building for sale, if there's any update, did, did you have that in your report?
No, we need a new, um, resolution to, to.
Put the second one, put it back out. They're still working on the Wi-Fi hardware, correct?
Oh, is that what you're talking about?
That and the light, the old cell phone.
I, yeah, I didn't hear anything back from Wi-Fi, and I need to follow up on that again. Um, but I think we just need to get a resolution from Eric on that, on his other building, so.
Yeah, we'll talk tomorrow, okay? Okay.
Well, Pete called and he wanted to, uh, let the council know that, uh, the first thing they're going to be working on is the windows at the golf course for the building there, and that he's got five bids, they got five bids for the windows. So, um, and then for myself, I have nothing.
Okay. Yeah? Eliza? I'm sorry, finish typing.
So for L and I, um, we don't have the final, final paperwork from them, but the understanding is that, uh, they have reduced, um, our fine from, I think it was eighty-something to sixty-six fifty-five. And we've requested a two-year payback period. I don't know of any reason why they didn't give that to us, so that's what we're expecting to get from them, but I don't have the final paperwork yet. Um, and then the other thing is that I, lucky I know that I'm resigning and I will be there through, through early January and certainly support anybody who comes after me. But I will say, I've really thought long and hard about what to say and what not to say, that the processes that our city went through during this last election, and I am not an elected official, I have not been covered from that. And I'm not okay with how things have gone over a number of years, therefore I'm taking my resignation.
Okay, I'm not going to say thank you. Accept it, okay? Okay, so at this point, I guess we need to approve the bills. Please, accept the motion to approve the bills.
I make a motion to approve the bills.
First, second, Dan's second, okay?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, can I ask a question then? Aliza, you're studying now at the end of January.
Oh, I next wanted to talk, sorry. I wanted to tell you that so that you could decide on the range.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. So that we can advertise, yes. And do we need enough, I mean, so if we don't discuss this till our next meeting in January, then that doesn't, unless we can, can that should stay further after, and are you willing to help train them personally?
Yes, I'm very willing to help train them personally.
Thank you for that.
Is there any reason why we can't have a pay range tonight?
Just, just choose a pay range and of course it's your pay.
Most of them are clearly grossier.
Well, she's.
Well, I, I'm an hourly employee and I make like thirty-five-six or something an hour, something like that.
So if you, if, if, what research, what she gets, do you guys want to go lower than that or higher than that?
Well, it depends on experience and.
Well, of course it does.
Whereas, whereas you keep, uh, for.
Home, I think.
She's got twenty-three, right?
No, she has twenty-three fifty.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three fifty.
No, it's a totally different job. Oh, I, yeah, so we're, that's not, I think, are you, I think, what did you come in at, you know, I know the salary that it cost.
Um, yes, but I think it was around, um, twenty-six, forty-three, something like that.
I'd say twenty-six even.
Yeah.
Yeah, how long ago?
In twenty, twenty-one.
Do you guys want to go ten percent either way from that salary or how do you want to?
You know, personally, instead of a range, because this is where we ran with some problems in a range, I would say, uh, we started at twenty-six, depending on qualifications.
You have to give a range, like legally now, you have to advertise a range.
Well, I think even when, then even when Kenda resigned, she was at twenty-six and that was after, how many years, twenty years?
Well, the ones I've seen, then, okay, you start at six and depending on what your qualifications are, then this is the range you'll be at when you have the qualifications.
I wish we had some of those numbers, I think you might come at thirty-two, somewhere in there.
That's where we were in the past, and I think that's twenty-eight to thirty-two, that's taken into account inflation and everything else and gives the mayor an opportunity to say, hey, you've got these qualifications, so I can go here, or you're, you're a newbie coming in, so we're going to start here. I think that's fair.
Okay.
That's what we've been in the past.
Twenty-eight to thirty-two?
Yeah. We made a motion on the case. Make them all, okay.
Approve that, the range of twenty-eight to thirty-two for, than higher.
Then move, Dave's second, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, great, thank you.
I make a motion that we close.
They moved?
None for applause.
What's that?
Move to the car.
Uh, who moved to pay the bills? Dave, you second it?
Yes, I did.
Mike, you moved it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you moved to adjourn, it was Shelly and Dave, no, Dan, okay, okay, we're out of here, thank you.